I believe we're all set, Madam Chair.
Okay, quick roll call. Mr. Stenbridge?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Okay, floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge. Let me start by reminding folks, sorry, my name, folks, that we have a five-member board today. Applicants have the option to be forward to a later hearing date to be heard by the full board. Mr. Stenbridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving into the 1:00 P.M. hearings, just in case, I think people know, if there's any requests for withdrawals or deferrals at this point?
Yes, Mrs. Stenbridge. The address is 34 Cobden Street.
34 Cobden. Be with me, please.
Sure, I'll take a time.
Second to last here.
That would be case BOA 1361964, with the address as mentioned, 34 Cobden Street. If you would not mind explaining to them?
Sure. So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, have a business address on 51 Thompson Road. Today, we are here seeking a deferral of this case. The plans have changed slightly, and the plans examiner at ISD did not have a chance to review them. Thus, we are asking for the deferral at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Javier?
Yeah, August 29th will be the next deferral date.
Does that work, Mr. Small?
I believe it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
34 Vinton Street, please.
4 Vinton. That would be case BOA 1461276. The address of 34 Vinton Street. Yes, could you give us some background on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti Business, address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. We're requesting an administrative deferral to be heard this, have this proposal heard in front of the full seven-member board, please.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, the deferral date for this one will be August 8th.
Does that work, Mr. Spitz?
Yes, that will work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
10 Thompson Square, please.
That's the first case, Mr. Stenbridge?
And that would be case BOA 1304433. The address being 10 Thompson Square.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I'd like to request an extension so that we may continue to work through community process. I would also ask, if possible, that the extension date be October 31st.
Javier, does that work?
Yes, that's available, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until October 31st?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward then?
Yes, sir.
Case BOA 1441845. The address of 592 to 600 A East Broadway. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti Business, address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner of the property, Mert O'Donnell, as well as the applicant for the fitness studio that's going to be proposed in one of the commercial spaces, Darcy Krensky. And then, we also have Nick Landry, who's joining us, who is the architect. The proposal in front of us today is a request for a conditional use permit to change the occupancy from two residential units in one nail salon to three residential units, one nail salon and one fitness studio, which is a forbidden use. The proposal is in a zoning sub-district of MFI Local Services. The building consists of a basement floor, which is a walkout on the rear of the property located on Emerson Street, a first-floor nail salon and one residential unit located on the first floor, and the other two residential units located on the second floor. The change of occupancy, which is including this new proposed fitness studio, will be specifically located on the basement floor, which at some point in time had a commercial occupancy, but was inadvertently removed from the occupancy with ISD for some sort of reason. As for the residential units, we are simply here fixing the issues with the jacket, which appears to be incorrect. The residential units have been operative for many years. The current owner discovered the issues. And again, this current owner is new. He purchased the property within the last year. And again, those issues were discovered with the jacket when applying for the change of occupancy from that basement commercial space to allow for the fitness studio. As you can see from the drawings, the square footages are all going to remain the same. There is no construction being performed on this property at all whatsoever. At this point, I'm going to pause for any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted a Butters meeting for 592 through 600 A East Broadway on May 15th, 2023. Noah Butters attended the meeting, and we are unaware of any concerns from the neighborhood. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors and a good community process. Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the team continue to work closely with the community on any quality of life issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Hi, Nick. Are you looking to give testimony here? You're unmuted.
Sorry, no, I'm just the architect. I was just...
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. All right. No additional raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Our type of motion for approval with BPDA design review and that for the ABX accessibility for fitness. So?
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA 1473196, with the address 331 to 339 Northern Avenue. I believe this is also an Article 8 project. Is the applicant and/or their representative present? Anyone here for 331 to 339 Northern Avenue?
Hi, related bill?
Can you hear us?
Hello?
Hello.
Hello?
We can hear you. Can you identify yourself? Are you here for...
Yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good afternoon, Madam Secretary, members of the board. I'm Attorney Jay Igerman of Ruben Junius and Rose with a Boston address of 112 Water Street. With me is Joe Mamiak, the Architect of Record, and for related deals, Steve Faber, Craig Wood, and Lindsay Knutson. The address is dual, actually. It's both Northern Avenue on one side, 331 to 339, and 2022 Dry Dock on the other. You can see on the visual the very large building across Dry Dock from our site. This was the subject of an RFP issued by EDIC within the Race Lane Marine Park. The proposal is for approximately 320,000 square-foot office lab building. There will be 114 parking spaces and an underground garage. The site, actually, at the time we applied to ISD, was thought to be about 85,000. EDIC owns all of this land, and it's actually slightly smaller. It's 82 and some change. There will be some ground floor retail, 3600, eating and drinking, just accessory for the tenants, but also a fit-out nonprofit space of 3600 for Gloucester Marine Genomics Institute. And the team will tell you about that. That's an important part of the project. This is an industrial district, industrial two. The uses are permitted by right. There are three forms of zoning relief sought. We do need an additional use permit for the accessory parking because it's restricted parking district, a variance to allow an FAR not of 3.72, but of 3.86 because of the reduced site size, and then a variance to waive the parrot cut setback. With that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thanks, Jared. Yes, Joe Mamiak for STA. What you're looking at on the screen here is the section of the building. It's life signs. It's a seven-story, above ground, two levels of parking below. The building has been raised in a very sensitive way to respond to resiliency. So, the ground floor is raised up five feet from the sidewalk, but, you know, two additional feet to get to 21.5 inches. And then, the building height itself, you know, goes from there with a, you know, 18-foot floor-to-floor on the first floor, 15 feet floor-to-floor for the subsequent floors above that. And then, you have a mechanical penthouse space that's on top. So, that's a nice, you know, suction rate in there that describes the project. And down below is the ground floor plan. So, if you scroll up a little bit on that, I can speak to that. So, that's the ground floor. It has its edges. And on Northern Ave, to the north, High Street to the right, Dry Dock to, you know, down below, and EDIC Garage is off on the screen just to the left on this image itself. The front door, there's two front doors, actually, to this project, one off of Northern Ave and one off of Dry Dock. And it has a true lobby that gets very activated. On the right-hand side, we have bicycle stores, some retail opportunities that faces off of Dry Dock Ave. And then, off of the right-hand side, GMGI that Jared mentioned, which is, you know, state-of-the-art teaching lab that's going to be really active, not only for the lobby side, but also from, you know, the street side and, you know, placemaking around the edges of the building. On the left-hand side, in the upper right-hand corner, is a food and beverage opportunity that we're very excited about. And then, on the left-hand side, you can see there's a lot of support space. We have the deliveries in the backup house. And for those that would be driving, you know, they would have access off of Dry Dock Ave. They would enter the building, and there's an accelerated ramp that goes down to two levels of parking that is within the footprint of the building. Again, there's 144 car spaces down below that support the project. You can see there's some additional transformers that switch gears to the left-hand side. We have some additional infrastructure that supports activities for life signs. In this case, we have Vertex, who is going to be the prime, you know, tenant for the building itself.
So, that concludes our presentation. Now, we could speak to the public benefits. As you can imagine, there's a very large debt payment, about $3.5 million. Of course, there's rent being paid. But there was a lot of effort put into that by the ground lessor to make sure that this project was going to benefit the neighborhood and the city as a whole. And we can speak to that in detail as you can.
Sorry, is someone on your team speaking, or...?
No, that's not us. That's not us, someone else.
Okay, all right. That's the background, then. Sorry about that. Okay, any questions from the board? I know, we already have your memorandum from BPDA. So, is there anyone from BPDA who wishes to speak? Doesn't sound that way. Okay, is there public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. 331 to 339 Northern Avenue was a BPDA project and went through their community process. ONS is unaware of any concerns at this time and would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process. The project will bring additional employment and research opportunities, good-paying jobs and collaborations with our educational and non-tough organizations while aiding the economic vitality of the area and in the city's economic recovery. Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the development team continue to work closely with neighbors during the construction phase on any quality of life issues. Thank you.
Yep.
I have no raised hands. Thanks.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, put forward a motion of approval.
Right here.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to case BOA 1461909, with the address being 212 Old Colony Avenue. I believe, though, it would be for Mr. Maranti.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. This is an application for a new six-story mixed-use building at 212 Old Colony Avenue in South Boston. My client is Cedarwood Development, and its principals, David Winnick and Dave Mateo. The site is a single lot of 5,198 square feet, occupied by a single-story commercial building most recently used as a warehouse located within an M1 restricted manufacturing zoning district under the base zoning code. More significant, the site is located within the area of the BPDA-approved plan, South Boston Dorchester Avenue, which provides for higher-density-guided growth along this major neighborhood thoroughfare of Dorchester Avenue, and in this case, Old Colony Avenue. This building would have a basement containing only commercial space, as well as elevator and building mechanicals. The ground floor would be occupied by a commercial unit engaging with Old Colony Avenue, as well as the main residential entry and in the rear with access from Lock Street and eight-car parking garage, as well as a trash and recycling room. Floors 2 through 5 would consist of two three-bedroom apartments per floor, approximately 1,575 square feet, for a total of eight residential units. Top floor would be an office unit with significant perimeter setbacks. The office unit itself, which is intended as the future office for my clients, would be approximately 2,000 square feet. My clients currently have their office at 212 West Broadway in South Boston and are seeking to relocate to what would be the top-floor office unit of this building. The building's six stories would rise to 60 feet in height, which is consistent with the 60-foot height allowance provided for under BPDA-approved Dorchester Avenue planning study. While there are several zoning violations, I would point out that they arise from the fact that this is a proposed mixed-use but predominantly residential building located in an area zone for manufacturing over 60 years ago. That formal zoning plan was left in place, solely to be updated by future new zoning, consistent with the plan's allowances. And as a result, this area has been recently transformed by such major residential and mixed-use development as Washington Village, which is located directly across Old Colony Avenue from this site, as well as several other BPDA and ZBA-approved projects in close proximity to the site on Old Colony Avenue. Point being that, in terms of the zoning, height, amassing density, and parking provisions here are all informed by the BPDA-approved plan rather than by the outdated base zoning code requirements soon to be replaced. With that, Madam Chair, members, I'll pause. Don't take any questions that any members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Maranti. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I take public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted a Butters meeting for 212 Old Colony Avenue on May 8th, 2023. Around a dozen Butters attended the meeting, and the proponent answered all questions, and the meeting was generally very positive. The proponents also did outreach to the Boston Housing Authority's senior housing development that borders this project and to the Andrew Square Civic Association. Again, they listened to all questions and addressed all concerns. The Andrew Square Civic Association overwhelmingly supports this project. In their own words, "We worked with the developer, along with BHA West 9 Streets Senior Housing, to make the following changes to the original plan and add community benefits: first, affordable commercial space in our neighborhood, buffering with garden and living wall, enclosing a small portion of the balconies for senior housing in the back, and parking for each unit." At this time, ONS would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and feedback from nearby Boston Housing Authority neighbors and the Andrew Square Civic Association, and good faith compromises on both sides, including a unit with parking spots. Work with the community on affordable commercial space on the ground floor, a community garden, and attention to quality of life issues with buffering for noise. Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the team continue to work closely with the community on any quality of life issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Square?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. John Pekertowski, Coach Chair, Andrew Square Civic Association Development. Anna White basically wrapped it up very well from our prepared statements. One thing I will add, the 212 Old Colony Avenue development proposal came before ASCA Community Meeting on May 22nd with developers, Palacio, Dave Mateo, Dave Winnick, Cedarwood Developments. At the end of discussion and membership vote, ended in a 24 in support, one opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have no additional raised hands.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve with the proviso that plans be submitted to BPDA for design review with attention to the coastal flood resilience, overlay district, and design guidelines for residential use.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Final case for today is case BOA 1406478, address being 84 Park Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, this is JD Barry. I am the zoning attorney representing Vu Hyun, who is the owner of 84 Park Street. I have a business address of 1156 Dorchester Ave. And with me today is the architectural firm, represented by James Christopher from 686 Architects, who also has a business address of 1156 Dorchester Ave. The proposal before the board, it was revised during the community process. It ultimately resulted in a proposal that's 14 units, a mix of studios, one and two bedrooms. There's two studios ranging from 450 square feet to 553 square feet, six one-bedrooms that are 628 square feet to 739, five two-bedrooms that are 855 square feet to 1,297, and there's one three-bedroom that's 1,179 square feet. I want to highlight to the board, this was originally a nine-unit project. In collaborating with the community and the Fields Corner Civic Association, their request was to make some revisions to the building in order to allow for some more parking and, most important, green space. That is why ultimately, the violations are the off-street parking. The code would require 17 or 18 spots. What we are proposing here is five. The FAR that the code requires is two. Our FAR here is 2.8. What I was getting to as far as the community process, the height here ultimately landed at 50 feet. That was due to the community wanting the building to get tighter and taller. And because the use is forbidden because this is, we are in a light-industrial zone neighborhood of Dorchester. With that, I'm going to actually turn it over to Mr. Christopher to run through the plans with the board, and I will be here to address any questions regarding the zoning.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher, 686 Architects, with business address of 1156 Dorchester Ave. Attorney Barry wrapped up the building quite nicely. It's a five-story building. We are proposing a six-foot rear yard setback, 10-foot upgrade, six-foot added cantilever, so that we do have significant green space to the rear. We have green space all the way around the building, including the seven-foot setback at the front of the building, which incorporates some planters. That was part of the discussion with the community. This iteration did lose one parking space as a result of the addition of the second means of egress on the stairwell. And the cantilever parking functions quite well off the street with the TOD, with the access to local MTA and bus stops. So, with that, I'll turn it over. Any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight to the board very quickly. This is what would be considered a transit-oriented site. It's very close to the Fields Corner train stop. We did include bike storage and a few other amenities to try to address and hopefully promote less cars on the site. That was one of the things that we've worked with the community to try to address. And as far as what was a confusing part to some of the community members as far as the roof deck, it was, it's more of a green roof deck. It's not a roof deck that's going to be utilized for any parties or anything like that. It would be only connected solely to the unit that the owner is planning to maintain. And I think Mr. Christopher can use the term better. I think it's photovoltaic, I believe is the term for it. The point was to try to create a deck that is living and actually is good for the community and is a green element to the project.
So, just on that roof deck, so how much of that is habitable, I mean?
It's not habitable. If you scroll down to the roof plan, right there. So, the only areas that, the lower roof outside of the penthouse level, which is the three-unit owner's unit, will be a green roof that we serviced...
There'll be serviced walkways, but it will not be habitable for residential use, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
And one last thing on that point. I apologize for cutting you off, Madam Chair. There was also a decision to add solar panels on top as well, to try to add a green element to the building.
So just a question, 14 units, is there an IDP unit?
I believe there'll be more than one. I'm not positive of the city's calculations, but I believe it'll be two.
Okay, so just to confirm, there will be IDP units, okay?
There will.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question, Madam Chair. So we didn't receive these plans until this morning, and we also had a note that the applicant decided not to have them re-reviewed by a plans examiner. Can you speak to that?
Certainly, and that's something I wanted to address. These plans, we had an abutters meeting on December 7th. We followed up with the Fields Corner Civic Association on January 23rd. There was a lot of collaboration with the community where they wanted us to do away with the three bedrooms and try to keep the building to one and two bedrooms and studios. That's where the number went from nine to 14, as well as there was a big push for more green space around the building. This set that is in front of the board was supplied and re-reviewed in April. And then in June, I sent along a, just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. This was re-reviewed by Mr. D'Amato. We received a refusal letter. We actually went back out and did a third, so I apologize, a second abutters meeting in May, just to make sure that the community was aware of the changes. We did meet with the Fields Corner Civic Association, both in February and in April, to present this set. And once we felt like the community was very supportive of this and had collaborated with our team, it was re-reviewed. And I believe there was a little bit of confusion when I sent along this set in June to make sure that the board was getting the correct set because it did get re-reviewed out of the normal course. And when I followed up about the concern last night, this morning, I was informed that we could go forward. If there's concerns about the timing of this, I don't want that to impact the decision by the board.
Is that a just your question, Ms. Weewell?
It does.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is Mr. Demi gone for the parking or did he submit any comments, Mr. Stenbridge?
Madam Chair?
Thanks.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob Demi, Kev T. D., I have reviewed the parking plans and, you know, they work.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I should go on to the Neighborhood Services. 8486 Park Street, some background information, they were very involved within the community, had an abutters meeting December, presented with Fields Corner Civic Association in February and April, and then concluded with one last abutters meeting with no attendees. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jeff, are you going to give testimony here?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Hello?
Yeah, you looking to give testimony?
Yeah, I'm just, Jeff Mack from Boston Duck Tours, wearing an abutter. And we just wanted to talk about the parking. I mean, you got 14 units and five spots. We're concerned about parking because we have employees that need to park in the area, and we're worried that at some point it might turn into residential only. We're also concerned about noise after a certain time because we do run a little bit late and a little bit early in the morning. So we're concerned that there may be an issue with noise or complaints of noise in the area, even though it's an industrial area. The other thing was the height of the building, and again, a variance on that, and other people in the area wanting to do the same thing and increasing the amount of people that are in the area and parking again being an issue. So we're not against, you know, building something. We're just concerned with parking and noise and, I guess, the height. So we just wanted to let, put that in there.
So the noise for who? Because your use sounds commercial. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, we're a commercial property and, yeah, we've had complaints from, actually, the previous owner of that building was really adamant but very angry a lot about the noise, particularly later at night because we back up, have large vehicles with a backup alarm. So.
I see, okay.
Yeah, so.
Got it. So the concern is, the concern is noise that you're making when residents complain?
Yes, exactly, yes.
Got it, okay. I don't know if the applicant is aware of that and.
He is. The last abutters meeting, I was there and I raised a concern. And he says he doesn't hear it, but, I mean, he cannot.
Okay, any other raised hands? Okay, does the applicant want to respond to that or?
Just quickly, Madam Chair, we're aware of this. This has been brought up since the beginning of the project.
Okay.
If this site is taken into account, it is largely a commercial parking lot surrounding it. I think the sense I got from the community is that they're hoping that this type of a project will actually add a residential aspect to the neighborhood that is actually in the current process of being redeveloped. And I think the site would, this would be a huge upgrade to the site. The height decision was more pushed by the community as a whole. We're not largely concerned about the noise impacting the residents. As far as commercial entity being concerned about parking, we fit as much parking on the site as we possibly could. We can't delever the site. We do believe that if it's one and two bedrooms, that should not bring a large number of cars. It's, you know, three studios or, I apologize, two studios and 11 one and two bedrooms and with a close proximity to Fields Corner and the bike racks. We're hopeful that this is not going to be a detriment to anybody in the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. With that, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion? Is that a question? I don't, is someone wishing to comment or, there's an Andrew? Andrew, oh, one second. I just see a raised hand from Bob. Okay. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I want to.
Go ahead.
I want to make a motion for VPDA design review.
A motion to approve with VPDA design review. And can you add the housing agreement be in place prior to permits?
Yeah, we can add the housing agreement be in place prior to receiving permits.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, the board will enter into an executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss with the board's council strategy and a court remand order relative to pending litigation. The pending litigation is Media Partners MRV LLC and Polish-American Civics Club of South Boston Inc. versus Boston Board of Appeal at AL Civil Action Number 2284 CV01482. The board will enter an executive session because discussing this matter with council in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating position. The board will not reconvene in open session following the conclusion of the executive session. May I have a motion to enter executive session?
Motion to enter executive session.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we will do executive session on the Zoom link, we will kick.